Agenda committee meeting to review the draft agenda for the June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three regular board meeting. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the agenda committee meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we accepted speaker cards for this meeting until the published start time for the meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of Duval County School District. So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and call on board members to let me know the draft agenda items that we want to have hold. We're on draft agenda review. I will start with Mr. Willie.
I have, uh, let's see, let's see what I have. Eight, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-eight. Eight, twenty.
Twenty-three, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Got it. Board member Carney.
One, seven, fifteen, twenty, twenty-two, forty-two.
So I've got one, seven, fifteen, twenty, twenty-two, and forty-two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pearson.
Two, seven, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, forty-one, forty-two.
So I've got two, seven, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, forty-one, forty-two. Okay. Board member Hershey, I'm gonna give you one minute to get situated and I'll go ahead and put mine down. I have, um, one, five, six, nine, and twenty-three. Although five, six, and nine is a collective question for legal. Any, any items for you?
Fifteen and eighteen and twenty-three. Oh, I got a trio that goes bad.
Fifteen, seventeen, and twenty-three.
Yes.
For Hershey. And board member Pearson has stepped out. So I guess.
No, she's.
Joyce. Joyce, I'm sorry, Joyce. I'm sorry. Remember Joyce? I was thinking about your jacket. I love Madras. Board member Joyce, it's stretching her leg, I believe. Um, so we'll get her.
She left something on the cart.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started with item number one. And I'll go ahead and start with, um, board member Carney, if you wanna get started.
Sure. Through the chair, to Dr. Green, just a quick question on the Hazel Health. I just wanted to know about the parental consent. Is that via Focus or is it letters sent home for services to Hazel?
Through the chair to board member Carney, it is through Focus. There is a medical, remember, there's several items for services and they have to check because they are.
Well, then I will move over to Nikki. My only question on this, first off, thank you for all the work around Hazel Health and continue to appreciate it. When you look at the expected outcomes and children being able to stay in class, clearly it's working. My only question is, who would we work with? Clearly, on the medical side, uh, where we've got some good stuff going. It looks like the mental health piece, um, maybe is lagging behind maybe a touch. And we know that mental health and all the stigma associated with it and such. Looks like eighty-eight percent of the visits for mental health are occurring in a student's home, not at school, which is great. My only question is, just is there a way that we can, um, talk about how do we best make sure that schools promote Hazel Health? Is there an obstacle in the district causing us not to use the mental health piece quite as much as the other piece? I'm just real intrigued with that because the medical piece was doing so well. And not that the mental health hasn't done well, but it just hasn't taken, lifted quite like the other.
Through the chair, to the chair. The mental health piece is also tied in with our total mental health services. So it really is the backup. So if a full, if a school therapist, their case load is full, we can refer them to Hazel Health until, until they can transfer maybe to an in-person therapist. But it has to fit into our total mental health package. So Ms. Taylor is working with all of our providers, along with Hazel Health, to, to, you know, find the best opportunity, I don't wanna say best fit, but the best opportunity. Sometimes Hazel Health, um, has the ability to, uh, have people who, who are speaking the same language where we might not have that available in their school, so then they're referred to Hazel Health. But if Dr. Grisler would like to add anything to that, but that, that's really what it's about.
Okay.
Unlike the medical, that is the, that's it at the school. Hazel Health, we also have, uh, our partners that we're working with.
Sure. When we made, um, when we made the agreement with Hazel Health, with the mental health support services, we let them know that we had a robust full-service schools model here in Duval County. And we wanted to make, make sure that we honored our local partners. And so when there's a referral made to Hazel Health for mental health support that isn't at capacity at the full-service schools, Hazel has been referring them to our full-service schools, our partners locally. And they've been taking cases that are overlooked. In addition, though, they also have been providing, uh, mental health counseling for all the students at the alternative school. That's part of the packet when the students go in. And then that, uh, mental health support is, is able to follow them back to their home school. So that's competing there. They can stay with the same therapist throughout.
Okay. And I appreciate all that, um, and clearly comprehensive, well-thought-out plans. So thank you as always. My only concern is that at the secondary level in particular, um, among male students, they don't wanna walk across campus, they don't wanna be seen. And, um, is there a way at some point, and not right now, that we can look at our target audiences and see whether they rather, would they rather have in-person on campus or would they rather do it this way? And that way, we give them what they're needing? I just wanna make sure we meet them with whatever platform, whether that's in-person, on campus, after school, in-person, or through this. I wanna meet everybody where they're most likely to take advantage of services.
And I would add to that, we have had cases where the parent has signed up through Hazel for mental health support services and they were referred to full-service schools and the parent said, never mind, I, I don't want it. In that case, they are going through Hazel.
Okay.
They are provided online.
Again, just about meeting people wherever they're most likely to access. And our high school males in particular tend to not like to go on campus anywhere for this item, so anyway.
Through the chair, I'm, just looking at the, the data from last year and this year, the, 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 the number of visits in total is amazing to see, like, the jump. I'm just wondering if that, can we expect that to sort of flatten out now that it's in place? Or do we, do we see, uh, even more of an increase in some of those unique visits and, and other visits? Just kinda wondering. And that's, I wonder if that's, whoever can answer that question.
Our physical health, um, services continue to climb slightly, but not, I mean, we had an exponential.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think in the fall. And so we are at about a hundred, a hundred, between a hundred and a hundred and twenty visits per day for physical health visits. I think that, um, to board chair, to board member Green's point, the mental health partnership could be used a little bit more effectively. But, and I, and I think, um, as parents get used to the idea of virtual support, I think that more of them are seeing how convenient it is. I don't have to take them to the, to urgent care or try to get them equipped with their pediatrician. And, um, Hazel speaks directly to their primary physicians, so it's, it's very convenient.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna pause real quick. Apparently, we have a few more people that want to come up from downstairs. I'm gonna ask that district staff, if y'all will move over to seats over on this side. This is like in church where we relocate. If y'all can move to seats on this side, minus.
No, there are a couple more. I've got a few.
And then security, if you could let the front office, front, uh, downstairs desk know that there are a few more seats available should anybody wanna come up. Thank you. Apparently, is that what, there were a couple more and we don't wanna deny anyone the opportunity, but also don't wanna have to move to climb because staff, that's a whole thing for staff, for us to move to climb. So we'll try to make this room work. Well, he'll let me know if we've got too many. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, board member Joyce, we just finished with item number one, but do you have, uh, what did you pull?
Item number one, two, three, seven, ten, twenty, twenty-three.
Okay, so one, two, three, seven, ten, twenty, and twenty-three. All right, I'll go ahead and call on you for item number one. The two others who pulled it have asked my question.
Okay, um, I think this may have already been asked. So through the chair to Dr. Green, I'm wondering, um, when we look at the financial impact, my recollection is that when we began with Hazel Health, that the funding was strictly from ESAR funding. Is that correct or is that not correct?
Through the chair to board member Joyce, in the beginning, yes, it's strictly ESAR funding.
So we, we started this, um, with just ESAR funds. Now we're moving this, obviously, to, um, non-ESAR funding. I, I'm wondering about the cost, the three-year cost. So the first year, I didn't see in here the financial impact going back. So I was wondering if we could, if you could provide in the board the funding for the first year, the second year. I think we're into our third year now. And with the perspective of, it was, are we reading out ESAR funds or are, you know, we've just gone from ESAR funds to general funds or, or whatever? Is this transfer cost? Kind of wanna know what that means. And then I also wanna know, is there any agreements associated with Hazel Health under the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold? Any side agreements with them? And then my last question is, do we use any of our state mental health funding, um, for this particular vendor?
Through the chair to board member Joyce, no, we don't use any of our state funding. And this still will be ESAR. I don't, I guess that needs to be added, but it still will be ESAR funding that will be utilized. And I'm not aware of any side. It, there's, there's no seventy-five, anything under seventy-five thousand because if it's Hazel, it still would have to be added to this because when you put the two together, it's over seventy-five thousand. But I, I don't, I'm not aware of any side for seventy-five thousand.
And then when our projected ESAR funding is going to run out, um, is there a, uh, direction from the district as to how we're gonna fund this piece if we wanna continue to utilize the services?
Through the chair to board member Joyce, the, these dollars, um, will be utilized until two thousand and twenty-four. At that time, the district will need to make a decision whether it will continue. It is my understanding that the pricing goes down significantly after year three. So at that time, the district would need to make a decision, yes, we can afford this or no, we cannot.
And I'm just, uh, I'm not sure that I read the item title ahead. Number one was agreement with Hazel Health. For anyone that's watching online, I apologize. Moving on to item number two, vice chair Pearson. We'll start with you, and it's Power School Online Assessment and Data Analysis System for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school year.
Thank you. I think I have a pretty simple question. It is, um, I, I get, I get some of our things mixed up because we have so many products and services and all that we use. Did Power School replace something? I, I guess I just need a general explanation of Power School. Did it replace something we were currently using? Or is it more the organization tool for several things that we're using? What is Power School? And how long has it been?
Through the chair to board member Pearson. As a, in the title, it was formerly called Performance Matters and the district has had it for a while.
Okay.
It is, it basically is a data warehouse. It houses all of our assessments, whether that's end-of-course exams, other assessments that we do throughout the year. And this is, uh, the system that the teachers can access and get, uh, that information. But I cannot tell you exactly when we. Just ready, you know, exactly when. It, it's been.
That's fine.
Yeah, I see.
It's fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, because this goes back to eighteen-nineties.
And it's gone through several different names.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. Chair to the, to the board, the, the confusion may also be that there are other Power School products and agendas. So there's also a Power School product that comes to the board with human resources and another that comes through Ms. Renfro. Um, and so there are multiple products. So you see the item, you see various items over the course of the year. I don't know if that.
That could be.
I have some additional clarification.
Thank you. Moving to board member Joyce, item number two.
Um, yes, through the chair to Dr. Green, when I look back at the financial impact, um, last year, it looked as though we spent five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, on this item. This year, we're projected to spend six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Wondering, um, if you could explain the increase, um, in the services.
Through the chair to board member Joyce, um, the increase is because charter admin, charter schools are utilizing, uh, Power School as well. If you look at the financial impact, our portion is five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, which will be paid out of district general, and then forty thousand will be paid from the charter administrative fee. But, um, it also could be an increase in, um, I don't see anywhere where this is an increase in price, but it generally is per student. So if you have more students, that, that would also impact the cost.
Yeah, that was my follow-up question. In the previous years, did we include the charter school population in the amount?
I do not know previous years. I'm gonna say yes, because if we're utilizing our administrative fees, then yes, it would need to be included. But I can't tell you whether that was more charters than previous years or less charters.
But all these included charter fees and now the price has gone up, even with our charter students.
Yes.
And we have, I guess.
And even though the price has gone up in twen, nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, the price was higher than with current prices.
Yes, yeah. Usually with these contracts, they go down.
Yeah. We could, we could do that. Go down.
And we're going back up.
You good? All right, moving, and I'm gonna do these collectively as a group to legal. I looked at five, six, and nine. Basically, these are all items that are used for, oh, three. Oh, three. Sorry. So we'll go to three Focus software.
I can get the disk.
No, go ahead. Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, five, six, and nine, um, collectively as a group, and then I'm gonna come back to eight, uh, seven and eight. Just a question for, uh, legal. With the situation of Dr. Green retiring and potentially, you know, and bringing in the superintendent, these are ones that are used to try to determine and be forward on instructional pieces. Are these all one-year commitments so that if a new superintendent, should they wanna make some kind of change, they could make those changes? I just wanna make sure that, because these are ones that often change with superintendent changes.
And to the chair, I'm not certain off the top of my head if these are one-year. I can double-check that, but they're all terminable at will.
They still all have that at-will clause. That's all I wanted. Good, we're, we're good to go then. All right, um, just wanna make sure that we're not obligating, um, should a new superintendent want to make those changes. I'm gonna swing back, um, at five, six, and nine, just for the record, or approval of the agreement with water for reading, reading company math and science. Six was freckle math, freckle ELA, star math, and star reading. And then nine was approval of the agreement with Curriculum Associates for I-Ready, uh, reading and math. And again, I had the same question on all three, so I'm just canceling those all out. I'm gonna come back now to, uh, uh, vice chair Pearson, item number seven. Approval of Duval County Public Schools K through twelve comprehensive evidence-based reading plan for twenty-three to twenty-four. And again, I'll start with vice chair Pearson.
So my first question is from the item report. And it's on the chart. The bottom. And it has the grade three through ten FSA, um, English Language Arts, percentage three, level three and above. And then three, grades three through five, six through eight, nine through ten. And we have percentages. I hear percentages thrown out frequently by different city leaders, um, and other folks. And I thought this would be a good opportunity for us to explain what the percentages mean and, um, and also look at our percentages in light of the state levels as well. And then also, uh, which students, what the different student groups that are included in these numbers.
Through the chair to board member, vice chair Pearson, I'm gonna ask.
Through the chair to board member Pearson, so this is data that includes charter. That comes, we can find it at the state site that breaks it down in this way. We also, um, through Mr. Wright's department, broken it down, Duval Traditional, including charter and then, um, grade levels. So this particular, um, chart was chosen just to show the breakdown that correlates to how we look at the reading plan, um, how it directs us to focus on, uh, K two, three, five, six, eight, nine, and above.
Okay, so I'll, my follow-up. This would include ESOL students who've been in our district after the two-year grace period who are testing. It includes ESE students. It includes everybody, is that correct? That takes the test, okay. Um, and then, so my other question was, um, let's talk about the percentages, what it means. What does a forty-five percent at, um, level three and above mean? Does that mean that fifty-five percent of our students in three through ten can't read?
On this day when they took this test, that's how they performed, so.
But what does a level three?
A level three, um, oh. Okay. So level three, as defined by the state, is partially mastered in state standards, based on FSA, uh, descriptors. So that's the definition of a level three.
So a student can, could potentially read but not meeting the state standards on that day?
That is correct. A T, a student, a student may not have been at their best. They may have, um, experienced a loss of learning through absenteeism. So I would not make, um, the full assumption that if they did not score a level three, that they are not literate at that grade level necessarily.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then I have one follow-up question. Because I have a number of, um, schools with high ESOL populations and, um, I have learned from talking with teachers and administrators that there's proficiency and there's basically like progress. So first growth, so for students who, who do fall into ESOL category or maybe ESE, who, who have some extra challenges, especially in reading, does this measure the growth that they're making? Or does it just measure proficiency for this test and what it's testing?
So this particular data shows specifically the proficiency on that test. It doesn't show the growth. The growth is another, is another, um, category that shows. And what we know about, I'm glad you brought that up about ESOL because students, when speaking with students, especially at the high school level, that cannot articulate that very easily, they say that time, it really works against them. Even though they've grown a lot, they have to translate. We talked about this in prior workshops. They have to read, translate it in their language, translate it back in English to create the answer, to mark the answer and start again. So I'm glad that you brought those questions up because we're so quick to look at a number. But we also have to understand that it's a time during that day based on the set of standards at the time that they took that assessment. And it is very important to understand. And also, other measures to determine grade level literacy. And there are those that we have many of.
Thank you. Oh, wait, I do have, I'm sorry, I do have two other questions for this. I don't know if this would be appropriate, but is there anything within our reading plan or any flexibility to incentivize staff to get the media specialist certification? Seeing as how we are short on that position. Is there, is there any way to incentivize through this bucket of money or another bucket of money as an incentive for our staff to get certified so that we can grow our ranks in that area?
Through the chair to board member Pearson. Good question. It would not be a part, it wouldn't be calculated as part of the allowed expenditure, for that certification per se in the reading plan.
Through the chair, the district can look at that as an, through.
HR.
Yeah. Through supplements, just like we would negotiate supplements.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question, um, in looking at the plan, and maybe I missed it, but in looking at the plan, there's the school literacy leadership team. And under it, it says relevant team, like, and relevant team members. In schools like several of mine and, and other, would ESOL staff fall under that relevant team member? Because I'm thinking that for some of the schools, especially, um, my, the elementary, and middle school, and high schools actually that I have, an ESOL tap team, somebody with that special knowledge, seems like they would be a relevant team member to be on a school literacy leadership team.
So through the board of, um, board member Pearson, they would be an integral part.
Okay.
Of the literacy team.
Okay, I just didn't see that specifically listed. So I didn't know if, if they fell under relevant or. Okay, thank you.
All right, move into board member Carney, you had also pulled this item.
Yes. Um, through the chair to Ms. Renfro, I wanna be the best person to answer this question. Since this is the first year that I am reading through one of these plans, I wanted to know if you could give me a broad overview of what may have changed for the coming year.
Through the chair to board member Carney, really, I think the biggest change is that it goes from state approval to now school district approval, which I think is outstanding. The plan is very reflective in that every year we gain, um, stakeholder feedback. People that are engaged in curriculum guides, that are engaged in the curriculum. That helps determine our future plans. So, um, in the past couple of years, I would say, this plan this year hasn't changed so much. But in the past couple of years, bringing in a, um, a priority in the science of reading, which we began researching the science of reading in two thousand and seventeen, fully implementing, um, starting with the beginning learning in two thousand and nineteen, when Dr. Green came and then continuing to teach us in our curriculum. So full science reading, the state has recognized that the science of reading is truly the measure to close reading gaps. Asking kids to look at a picture and get the gist, it's not reading.
Right. Any others? Board member Joyce, you had also pulled this item.
Um, yeah, that was really one of the questions that I was gonna ask. And I think, um, just an additional question would be, um, when we look at, you, you explained the stakeholder group that looks at the plan. I didn't see, and, and maybe it's not relevant, but I didn't see any outside stakeholder participation as far as parents or community leaders that this is strictly stakeholders that are doing the work in the district. And I'm wondering if there's any value at all, in your opinion, to pulling in, uh, maybe other stakeholders to, when you sit in, listen to what.
Yeah, through the chair to board member Joyce. So part of the data gathering as the state provides are the people that are connected to the curriculum. But of course, I mean, we share the plan. But as we are continually in engaging our stakeholders, definitely that's another level. And that's something, looking at literacy and reading and re-revising our approach to professional development and teacher and school clarity, you're gonna see those components in the upcoming school year.
Can you explain really fast, what does that feedback look like? Do these, do these stakeholders, do they convene in a room and they discuss? Or is there a survey that is sent out? How is this information gathered?
So it's a survey. We, and Brandy Berry, our director of K twelve literacy is right over here too. She had, we have, as it says in the plan, monthly coaches meetings. So we, we send it out through monthly coaches meetings. We also have a teacher team site, Microsoft team site. That's where we give updates and we help answer questions as through there. We also, through our academic services newsletter and principal meetings. So trying to get as much feedback from our various district groups is very important. And we did have a wide variety. We had teachers, coaches. We had regional specialists through division of schools, provide feedback, principals and assistant principals this year.
So annually, we submit this plan to the state. This is the first year that they're asking the board to approve the plan that is now gonna be submitted
Correct.
to the state. And what I'm hearing is there's no significant changes from last year to this year.
Correct, from expectations in the state plan. Just what we're taking reflective feedback and how we're going to look at professional development resources.
Through the chair, follow up there. So I know some of the things that we're potentially approving in June fall into this. So I'm just wondering, I'm sure there's some reliance on us approving some of those pieces to make sure this plan works. How, what is, how does that order of operations work? If we approve something or don't approve something, then it's in here? Just kinda wondering about that. That's my first question. And then I'm excited about some of the, the things we've already approved as a board, like the water for the U fly. So I'm just wondering, I tend to believe that some of that's gonna show up later on because we're doing that with some of our younger students, so that's gonna show up in the later grade. So my first question's around order of operations with that. And then my second question's around the excitement or your sort of big, big piece around like what, what's next? And how do we sort of anticipate that?
Through the chair to board member Willie. Thank you for that great big question. So this is a piece of the big picture, right? Just, I think just as you were alluding to. Because we also have the fidelity of instructional materials, that plan, that aligns all professional learning to ensure that teachers are receiving training and apply the curriculum with fidelity. We also provide those resources, tier two, tier three resources. Everything now, when we look at the science of reading in our ELA, all aligns to the science of reading. There's not a, this program hits this skill that isn't completely connected to core. So everything comes back to connecting and supporting core in a way that's very, very strategic and different than it looked in two thousand seventeen.
I'm gonna stay over with you, board member Willie, for item number eight. Approval of the agreement with Khan Academy for supplemental math, Linden Learning Resources. You could pull that item.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Through the chair, just, this is probably a quick question. Just wondering, I know we have some, I feel like we have other Khan Academy resources. So just wondering how this fits in. It seems like it's in response to a need of some of the, the pieces that we're seeing as far as algebra and geometry. So just wondering how this Khan piece fits into the other.
So through the chair to board member Willie. You know, these kinds of resources get me really excited, as you said earlier. So Khan Academy, we, there are free versions of Khan Academy that school districts across the country use. This version of Khan Academy, which we personally worked with Sal Khan, is very customized to our scope and sequence of our standards in the state of Florida, but also with our school district. They've brought people to our district to talk to students specifically. How many, how many companies do this? You know, Sal Khan came not as a vendor. He came, he developed Khan Academy to help students because he had family members that were struggling in mathematics. So this version of Khan Academy provides so many scaffolds, but also supports for teachers that go beyond the free version. So it, it provides even videos, breaking it down with children, how the, how the support and how the practice scaffolds to support them. And it's very much inquiry based. So you know, sometimes you can, when you are running into a wall, understanding a problem. And some programs will say, okay, do this. Oh, not quite. Why don't you try this? Where Khan Academy asks questions to prompt you to get to the answer that you have learned those steps instead of plug in, you know, twenty-four. That works. You see how using twenty-four for X will get you. It really, it works very synonymously with our core content. And they have tailored so much to ensure that what children are exposed to in small groups, in small group instruction is matched to what they're doing at core. We also, we also strongly encourage the use of a free tutoring program that we talk during grad checks, especially with our high school students. And it's called Schoolhouse for Tutoring. It's free. They get live synchronous tutoring virtually. They also have prep sessions. I know personally, my daughter wanted support with AP Physics. We couldn't find an AP Physics tutor through Schoolhouse, but they had AP Physics sessions to support them in their AP exams, like phenomenal. Another one coming up, I know this is unsolicited, you will be familiar with this. Board member Willie, is Khanigo that we will look to pilot as a district that uses AI technology through inquiry.
All right, well, we're gonna move to item fifteen, number ten had also been pulled, but board member Joyce has stepped away. So I'm gonna move to fifteen, which is Duval Charter Scholars Academy Renewal Charter School Contract. I'll start with board member Carney.
So I was looking at the previous outcomes for this charter. And I know that I was, I had questions about the no school grade awarded. I know that was during COVID, correct? So did we not award any grades during the two-year period? Because I thought it was just.
Through the chair to board member Carney, it was actually two years. The year we went into COVID twenty twenty, there was no, there was no testing period. Then this year in twenty twenty-one, schools could elect to take a grade or not take a grade. And so where you see an asterisk, they elected not to take a grade. So they are still holding, at that point, they still hold on to the previous grade. So for Duval Charter Scholars, in that year, they would have still held on to the C. But in twenty-one, twenty-two, you see that's, that's the school grade that they, their last.
Okay. I guess I just have some concerns because it seems like they're going in the opposite direction. I was looking to see if any students stay currently on. So I guess just through the chair, Dr. Green. What is the stipulation with renewing a charter with a D grade? Is it consecutive years that they have to have a D grade refreshment of my own?
Through the chair to board member Carney, the law says that they can only close as if they had two consecutive years of F.
So it would be up to us as a board if we feel that.
Through the chair to board member Carney, if you feel that this school is an academic concern, they could go to school improvement, but that, I think that is three years of consecutive Ds.
Okay.
So right now, they only, they only have one.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. Board member Hershey, you had pulled this one.
Mine was along the same lines as board member Carney. I've said this before, it troubles me that when our schools' grades fall, we are held accountable and immediately have steps we have to take. And charter schools can flatline at a D and continue to receive taxpayer dollars. So I'm gonna vote no on this, just for principle. And I know that I've got a couple more years, but I, it just troubles me at the state level with the lack of accountability for charter schools and their ability to get a D. Because I think if they, if we could address it when they first get it versus waiting for three Ds when things start to fall apart, that we'd be better stewards of public dollars as well as really looking out for, in the best interests of students.
Last three years of putting children at risk.
Right.
It's not a necessary, board member Willie.
Through the chair to that point, so for, for the public's sake, if they get a D, what action does that school have to take? As far as improvement, plans submitted, things like that?
Through the chair to board member Willie. I don't, I know what the law says that three consecutive years, but the, the office of school choice does intervene and work with that school and looks for plans of how are you going to improve. But if you're asking legally, then it's three.
But that's, that's our office.
That's our office, yes.
So our office has recognized that these students who are in this school need support, so we're gonna step in.
Yes.
And, and say, hey, how can you?
We do offer our assistance.
And I wanted the public to know that, there's, cause to your point, board member Hershey, I agree. Like we need, there needs to be, there are students who may or may not, and that's the frustrating part. They may or may not know or understand what that D means, or even if that D has been advertised. So they're going into a school because it looks a certain way or, or other reasons and not truly understanding. So I think there's also a piece around the marketing of a school grade. Sometimes you can easily hide, not, not showcase that at all. And then all of a sudden, you're continuing to take dollars, not just small amounts, four million dollars, which is a lot of, no. So just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
I'm gonna move back to item number ten, which board member Joyce had pulled. Approval of the K twelve implementation of instructional materials plan. Board member Joyce.
Was there anyone to pull this?
Yes.
Okay. Really simple question. We're approving this. I just wanted to know through the chair to Dr. Green, were there any significant changes from last year?
Through the chair to board member Joyce, no. Because we bring all new instructional material items to the board. So anything that's in here, the board has already.
All right, moving to item seventeen. Board member Hershey had pulled it. It's Lone Star High School Renewal Charter School Contract. Board member Hershey.
So I have a couple of questions. One is, if I remember correctly, correctly, Lone Star is kind of a drop back in school to help students who may not be on track to get a diploma, earn their diploma. Is that correct?
Through the chair to board member Hershey, yes.
And so my other question is, when you look at Bridge to Success and Biscayne High School and Duver Michael School, it seems like, like Bridge to Success, the utilization is, you know, a hundred and seven percent. It looks like the success rate is, is higher as well. I'm just wondering, can you tell me a little bit about the demographics of Lone Star? Why is there, like Bridge to Success has like a seventy-six percent and the rest are, you know, not even a. Someone can use a plane?
Through the chair to board member Hershey, I would say the demographics are very similar. I don't, maybe Mr. Hayes might know the exact demographics, but. We can pull that information. Bridge to Success has been a diamond for our district of working with students who are behind, not only just academically, but their age, their age is older than the grade level that they're in. And I think it's just the consistency. And they are also working well with those that are on regular, you know, high school or middle school campuses. They're also engaged with their general students. So it, it, it's hard to say why Bridge to Success is more successful than these charter schools because these charter schools may actually go out and find students. Bridge to Success, these students are already in our school district. They may be struggling, and so a counselor may be intervening and with their family and say, hey, this might be a better option. Whereas Lone Star and Biscayne, they're going out recruiting students from the general population that may meet that criteria.
That, that may not.
That may.
Otherwise get even a GED or a high school diploma.
That is correct.
Do we know how many students graduate? I mean, like the number of students, I mean, from Lone Star.
We'll get to that.
We have a number. We'll give that to you.
Any other question?
No. Item number twenty. Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries, I just remembered my question. Through the chair to Dr. Green. We're talking about Bridge to Success. I know that students are sort of counseled to maybe enter into that program from our middle school or high school or even maybe elementary school. Do we have a cap? I mean, is there like a, a, a number where we say we can't take any more students in our sex program? So then we, we may refer them to one of the other. I thought so.
Well, it's about space.
It's fine.
We don't have any more space, then yes. They may be counseled, okay, you can't go to this particular program, but here are other programs that are available.
And since this program is so successful, is there any conversation within the district to try to expand this program? You know, we have some buildings that are going to be vacant, or maybe we could utilize a bigger space to accommodate a, a program that probably we could grow and it would increase our graduation rate.
Through the chair to board member Joyce, we are utilizing. So we, we are moving another bridge to success to Henry Kite because we need more space. Right now, our high schools, they're doing well. Their, their utilization numbers are pretty high, and that's where we're having the issue. So that's why we're using St. Clair Evans for Bridge to Success. Now we're gonna use Henry Kite for Bridge to Success. But utilizing our high schools are, have high utilization numbers. And so that's why it's hard to find space for them. But I think in the future, that will be a decision. You kinda, you're kinda between a rock and a hard place. Your master facilities plan is supposed to reduce student seats. When we add Bridge to Success, it's not adding more students. It's the students we have that are struggling. And so you're really not reducing student seats by opening up another building to do Bridge to Success. So it, it is that decision the, the district and the board would need to make about. Which, in my humble opinion, helping students would be the most important. But at the same time, if you're not, the, the whole point of the referendum was, we promised to reduce student seats and utilize our facilities the best way possible. So MLK is the largest, I believe, right now, elementary school that, that we're consolidating. But it's being used as a swing space. So next year Highlands Elementary will be in MLK. Probably Martin Luther King Elementary would be the best location if we really wanted to expand. But that would be after we, we have stopped using it as a swing space.
Just, I remember, you, you read my mind with that question, because I was gonna ask that, but did not. Is something that's working, how do we expand it? I applaud the idea of, um, moving, you know, or expanding to Henry Kite, I think that's good. But, you know, we may have some underpopulated other schools that just might be a good model for us to think about. So just as a bring back, maybe in, you know, three to six months, could we have a, a update on Bridge to Success and, uh, needs within the district? And ways to expand that throughout the district?
Sure.
Since, I mean, if, if we're doing, if we're doing something well, it's really great to replicate it, I think, and especially to get kids across the, the finish line to hand them their diploma. Thank you.
All right, now we'll put that as a bring back. Um, uh, we're gonna move to item number twenty, approval of third contract amendment with ESS Southeast Lake, Lake Southeast LLC for substitute teaching services. I'll start with board member Willie.
Yes, to the chair, uh, this, a quick, quick question, um, as we're talking about staffing, I know this is about an increase, I think, in pay. Just wondering, the rationale behind that, and if there was some sort of information gathering from folks, and say, if you increase this much, it'll increase our, our number of folks who would wanna sign on, just wondering how we landed here.
To the chair, to board member Willie, we landed here because of state law amendment wage, of having to get fifteen dollars an hour. That's how we.
This gets us here, but that's not, we're doing it, that's immediately?
No, we've been doing this informally until we get to fifteen dollars an hour.
Board, uh, board member Joyce had also pulled this item.
Yeah, um, I just, my question, well, comment was really around, um, we've entered, we entered into this contract with ESS right when I got on the board, nineteen twenty, um, nineteen twenty, right?
That seems like a long time.
I know, it was. Um, uh, and before that, we had Kelly Services. Um, this, I'm wondering, when does this actual contract end, or did we just renew it? I can't remember. This is the last.
This is the last year.
To the chair.
This is the last year. And so when, um, I'm, I'm assuming that there will, there will be some data coming back to the board, the, our RFP will go back out again, um, and that RFP, are we gonna look at like the vendors who are, um, being contracted for substitute services, whether it be ESS, Kelly, whoever else? But I'm sure they will give us some data as far as their fill rates in other counties, because I think that's important for me. Um, I know we've had some issues, I understand we've had COVID, we've had a lot of, and, and other districts have had the same issues. But, um, at the end of the day, I just wanna make sure that when needs come back to us, that we have solid data, um, with other companies, and maybe can make sure that.
See, board member Carney, you had also pulled this item.
Yes, through the chair, this is just a clarifying question, um, so the ESE contract, they are not considered employees of DCPS, correct? Because they're, they're employees of ESS, and they would not qualify for any, for no, for random services or anything of that nature, is that correct?
Uh-huh. Chair, to board member Carney, yes.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number twenty-one, minimum qualifications, teacher ESE certified behavior analyst, vice chair Pearson, I'll start with you.
You can start, Andy.
This is something that I have talked with staff about, based on, um, what I'm hearing from teachers and, and administrators, and from, actually, what I experience when I volunteer, um, to sub in some of the schools, is that, um, I don't know if it's a thousand people a day, I don't know if it's consequences of COVID, I'm not sure what it is. But our schools are seeing an increased number of students with some pretty serious and disruptive, um, behavior issues, that are not coming to us with IEPs or any kind of staffing. And so, um, I've asked staff to look at how we can, uh, what I understand is that it's a minimum of six weeks to go through the whole evaluation process before a student could be, um, I guess presented with a plan or potentially move to another service, um, area, like a pride unit or another area, um, outside of the mainstream classroom. And, uh, because of, of short staffing, that's drawing out, and it's having an effect on the other students and families in the classroom, because it's disruptive. It's wearing out our teachers, because, um, they are managing sometimes three students with some pretty erratic behavior, and trying to teach another twenty or however many, and stay on target for their standards that they're supposed to reach. And it's wearing them out, and I've talked to a number of veteran teachers who are saying, it's, I'm at my limit with it. So, I asked what we could do to help, and I think this is a response to that, so I wanna say thank you. Um, in talking with one principal Friday, I think, um, his caution was just, he said, it sounds great if we can get more in, and, and I specifically would like to see us ramp up for the first nine weeks and try to get as many students evaluated in that first nine weeks as possible. His caution was, if we're not looking at staffing the pride units for an influx, a, a faster influx of students who need services, then we're gonna end up, um, making our s- our pride unit classrooms bigger, um, and that's gonna be another problem. So that would, really, this is, I don't know. I guess my question is, have we thought about that? Um, if we're able to get students evaluated and, and a plan written and, and located where they need to be, um, are we also thinking about increasing staffing in pride units or another place where those students might land?
To the chair, to vice chair Pearson, we have a staffing model for ESE, and normally it's nine students, and pride might be a little different, but we will stick to that staffing model. The only caution I would give you is that you'll probably end up with a substitute. That's where a large number of our vacancies are in ESE. And I would, I'm gonna guess that pride is probably leading the way. So, yes, you can get another position, issue is, can you find someone certified?
A certified teacher.
Certified teacher to put, to take that position.
So, then if, and again, what I'm hearing is, six weeks would be a best case scenario for, to go through the whole evaluation process, so.
And six weeks, through the chair, to, six weeks would be miracle work?
Right, yeah.
But, um, yeah, six weeks is, I mean, miracle.
I mean, that's why I was saying, I never saw that, that's why I would love, I would love Josie.
Best case, but it stretches out much longer than that, so. Anyway, I'm passing on that from one of the administrators, is that would be great, but we need to make sure we have places for these students to land and not overwhelm these pride classrooms or other units.
I'm gonna put, uh, also as a bring back item, because this is, uh, this has been an issue since the beginning of time in this district, I, I think board member Joyce would have heard that. Um, I'm gonna put that as a bring back item to check on, um, in the fall, in particular, where we are in such, just like the Bridge to Success item, is that okay with you? Um, because I do think it's worth, um, us double checking to see, were we able to hire for this position and not use contracted services by moving the position down in terms of qualifications? Because that's essentially what I read the item to be. Anyway, I, I think it's worth us, I know we've had one presentation on it already since we've been on the board, but I think it's worth another, so I'm gonna put that there. All right, um, all right, so, item number twenty-one. Um, moving to item, uh, number twenty-two, which is approval of MOU memorandum of understandings for referendum pay. Uh, board member Carney, I'll start with you.
Yes, um, through the chair, I had, over my back, okay. So, I just wanna make sure I understand the allocations here. It looks to me that the union members are getting a bump, they have an incentive for being a union member versus a non-union member, is that correct on the payout? Am I reading that incorrectly? I just wanna make sure that I'm, I think I'm on.
To the chair, to board member Carney, I'm gonna let, um, officials.
To the chair, whether you're a union member or not, this is the allocation you will receive.
Okay, so I guess this is because I was looking at the annual per employee allocation for non-union exempt employees, less the benefit rate, okay. And then I was looking at that chart, so the chart is actually what the payout actually is, is that correct?
For the teacher unit, that is correct.
Okay.
The other units are dividing it evenly, so we didn't need a chart.
Okay.
Okay, if I may, do you wanna clarify non-union exempt, so that everyone has an understanding of what that is? Because that may be where the issue lies, it's the translation of that.
Yeah, that might be where my guess is, thank you.
Our exempt employees were actually on our prior, um, last month's agenda, so they're actually done. But, um, the mem- memorandum is for any employee in the unit, whether you're a union member or not. If that makes more sense, I guess, but.
Thank you.
All right, I will move to vice chair Pearson, you had also pulled this item.
Yep, um, is this gonna be a lump, it wasn't clear, is this gonna be a lump sum or invited out among paychecks?
Through the chair, we'll be dividing.
Okay.
And I'll go ahead and ask on that, as somebody who's, um, when will those start? To the chair, for the ones with approved agenda items and MOUs, it will start on July one, or whatever the first paycheck is. First paycheck, got it, okay, good. All right, um, we will move to, the next item is item twenty-three, multiple people pulled it, cabinet position additions to senior management service class. I'll start with board member Willie.
Yeah, through, um, through the chair, just kinda wanting, uh, to get a sense of, um, overview, I appreciate the comparison to other districts, um, so just trying to get an understanding of, of the why right now, but also, I have a statement after we get the why.
To the chair, to board member Willie, uh, just so we can clear, this is like the third time we brought this item, so I didn't want anybody to think that this is the first time, this is like the third time we've brought this item. Um, currently, the superintendent is the only individual at the, in the district who currently qualifies for senior management service class. It is utilized for positions that, um, I don't, positions that, I don't wanna say high risk, but you're making, um, those positions are not as protected, if you will, as positions that have units that su- that support them, such as, uh, unions. This is also, every district has to make a decision, what positions qualify for senior management service class. Uh, it, it does give more in your top five years of support when you, when the individual retires. If an individual is already in drop, they don't qualify for this, even i- even if the board approves it. It is only for those members who, while they're in that position, it, and they're not in drop, can they earn this credit for, towards retirement. Most districts have their cabinet in senior management service class. This, uh, if you look at the information we gave you of the Big Seven, we're the only district that only one person is in that class management, and that's two of them, and that's only the superintendent. So that is why we're bringing that.
Got it, and, and as, so as somebody who's been on cabinets and looking for roles, if you're somebody outside, and we will have, you know, new folks as superintendents and some other positions as folks are retiring, is this something that's appealing, or folks are looking at when they're saying, hey, I wanna come work in this particular spot? Are they looking at this sort of piece to say, like, this is a benefit and additional value to add as I make my decision?
To the chair, to board member Willie, yes, because even if you don't stay in the position for decades, it applies to the years that you're in the position. So when I was in another district, my position qualified for senior, so those years were on my, um, my salary list. So, it, it's a benefit to the individual, no matter how long they stay in the position.
And, and I ask that question because I know we, as we get ready for some transitions, it's an interesting sort of time to bring it back up, I think it's something we should, just have a conversation about as a board, for sure.
Board member Joyce.
Um, yeah, I pulled it, um, because I realize it's the, um, third time that we have seen this. And, um, I think there was some conversation around the district, going after a tax increase because we couldn't pay for our air conditioners, and we had maintenance issues. And then we had significant, uh, issues with how we could pay our employees, and so that is how we went up the referendum, and I think this sort of thing came up during those two times. Um, so, we didn't, we're at telling the public, we don't have enough money to run our schools, uh, so it really wasn't a good time to, you know, ask for this. And then one of the things that we did to sell the referendum is to say, the superintendent cabinet is not gonna be included in that piece, because honestly, you know, these are the highest paid people in the district. And I, I feel some sort of way about it coming now, that after we have went out and got the two increases, um, and after we told the community that, uh, we can't afford to run our district. And then, as we move forward, and we look at this significant amount of issues we are gonna have to have, propping up and funding some of the things that we're doing to teach children how to read, write, and do math, and we're gonna have to make some hard decisions in the future. I am concerned that moving these positions from eleven point nine one percent, that is currently what we, uh, the contribution rate, to increase it to thirty-one point five seven percent, it seems to me that that is not gonna go over well with the public. Um, and so those are the concerns that I have. I know it's the third time that it's been brought forth. I was not a fan the first two times because of the reasons I mentioned. I still think that this is, uh, something that doesn't reflect well on us to do this at this time. And then when I do look at the, you know, counties that do have these, I, I don't necessarily, like Broward doesn't do that. And then there's listed the Jacksonville Aviation Authority, and Florida College, and the Port Authority, which have really nothing to do with, you know, the Rappel War that we're in. And so, um, I really have a hard, a hard time with this, with this. And I don't know that I have any questions, that's just my statement.
Vice chair Pearson.
Yeah, this is interesting, I don't know if anyone else has been following the news on candidate searches for superintendent positions. I think the number I got from FSBA was, since January of twenty twenty, there've been twenty superintendent, or counties who have gone out to look for superintendents. Broward actually came up in the news this week because they have, um, extended their deadline for candidates, because they didn't get the caliber of candidates they wanted for superintendent, being one of, I forget whether like the sixth largest or seventh largest district, and they were hoping to get someone, um, from a large, a large district in another state. Um, and when you look, when I look at, um, who the top candidates are for some of the other, maybe smaller counties, or not so much smaller counties, they seem to be this level, this is who's, this level person, um, is, is who seems to be, um, ending up in the top five and three for a lot of these searches.
is, is who seems to be ending up in the top five and three for a lot of these searches. So just in looking at the position list, I mean, I agree that we should be as lean as we can be, but looking at retirements, looking at potential promotions, we have some really quality people that if they haven't been already approached to apply in another county, I would be surprised if they aren't gonna be approached. And knowing that who's filling superintendent jobs, there's, that's leaving a space which will be filled. And there's gonna be, I think, a lot of shuffling within the state within this level of person. And I would tend to say that we need to put ourselves in a position to be as competitive as we can to attract the best talent that we can. And it, like I said, generally, I think we should be as lean as we can, but I think we should also be realistic for in the job market that we're in. And we want to get the best people that we can get. And we seriously need to consider if this is going to help us attract the talent that we need to lead our county.
Board Member Hershey.
Well, Board Member Joyce ran my mind again and took most of my words, so that was going to say. I would just underscore the comments that Board Member Joyce made, has come up with the board multiple times. Really most concerned about the fiscal impact this has on the district at this time. And I appreciate the view of the number of leadership changes throughout the state of Florida. But when we are looking for a superintendent, they are already in that slot and they get it. And so I don't think that that's an issue for me. And anyway, I just have concerns with this. So if this remains on the agenda, I would pull this for a discussion.
I also pulled this item, and I pulled it first three, and let me see this. I, Vice Chair Pearson absolutely gives some compelling, you know, arguments to consider this at the right time. Absolutely, we want to recruit and such. I will say, having been on cabinet, I didn't know the percentages. I wasn't aware of them. And so I, it wasn't a draw for me or not a draw. My reasons that I can't support this at this time is the healthcare possible changes that, and I can't put three hundred thousand dollars towards ten or twelve people when we've got the healthcare issues in terms of cost. We still have a teacher compression issues, issue. This could be a thousand dollars more for three hundred teachers. And I can't, I can't do it knowing that. And there, and there's also a simple item on this, which is that if we, as we bring forward a new superintendent, cabinet will likely change in terms of positions. Who certain superintendents put on cabinet, who certain superintendents don't could potentially change. And so I think it could be a timing issue for me. I'm not saying I would never vote for this, but at this time, I want to see that we have the healthcare situation in a better place, the compression issue for teachers in a better place, and that we have the stability of that long-running superintendent we're gonna have in the long run. We know who that person is going to have on cabinet, and then we can reconsider the item at this time. I just, I would struggle with doing it right now, knowing that, again, certain superintendents in this district have had these people on cabinet, certain superintendents have not. And so I would hate to say they're going to get it and then get a new superintendent who says, you know, HR is no longer on cabinet. And that might, might not occur, might occur, I don't know. But I just think the timing is difficult now as well. But the healthcare costs and the compression issues with teachers are looming over my head and in my head right now. And that's causing me some heartache on it. Anyone else that wants to speak to this item or not? Board Member Joyce.
Yeah, and I also just wanna add, we do have positions in the district that are hard to fill. I've never, you know, had a position that was hard to fill. People, you know, it's a very coveted job. So I don't think that, you know, if we had an issue with, you know, people just not wanting to do the work, that might be a reason that I would be persuaded. But that's not the case. There are a lot of people who long for these very sought-after, coveted positions within the district.
Yeah.
Board Member Jen.
Yeah, I know it's never a good time. That's why it's been on the agenda twice, because we were concerned about the time. With the turnover in these positions, especially when you're looking at getting superintendent, now may be the best time to do it. It's not so much filling the position, but getting a quality person to fill the position that has the experience, that know how to use students and provide support that superintendent needs. So I understand the compression issue, I understand the insurance issue. But we also have to have quality people, well-qualified people in these key positions in order to address those very issues that we know are looming that we have to address. So I haven't made my manner completely, but I hope we can do this.
Board Member Willie.
Final question. Through the chair, to your point around if the positions shift, how does that work? I mean, I see all these other districts that have a bunch of different positions. So I'm assuming they just can keep those consistent the whole time? So if, if this board voted and said, yes, we approve this, and then a new superintendent came in and shifted some of those roles, is there a process to that? Is that a whole new vote, a whole new policy that we have to vote on?
I don't know that off the top of my head. What I would say is, that's one more reason that this is good for discussion in the long run, is to know how would we move those things? If after a year a superintendent decided they wanted to move someone up to cabinet, are we then obligated for that position? I mean, if we're gonna do this, I think we've gotta really think through and have a thoughtful system as to how to interact with it, and not just say, oh, well, we're gonna do it for these positions and we're done. I think we've gotta be looking at that, you know, positions flux in and out of cabinet. And so, you know, I, I think we would have to have that system.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I mean, this is a, this is always gonna be a tough conversation. Reason why it's been on here a number of times. I think it's, will never be in the right timing. There's no, there's always gonna be something that you say, well, we can't do it for this, we can't do it for this. So, but it is sort of this piece around, how, how do you make, make it ensure if we're moving this district in the right place? It's about leadership. Like, that's what it's about. We say that with our schools, we say that about everything else. And I think we have to take care of our leadership. And may, maybe this, maybe other things. Because so, what I will say is, it's not as though these folks aren't deserving of it. What we're saying, what some folks are saying is, it's timing. Am I hearing that correctly?
I, I, I would say for me, where you are, that it's worth a discussion. But timing is gonna be the issue for me. And that's, especially given the fact that we're in transition of leadership, the timing is troubling, troubling to me. Any other? Vice Chair Pearson.
Yes, I'll just repeat something I've said earlier, that the state of Florida has a twenty-two billion dollar surplus. So it's a shame that we're talking about not being able to do something that I think would make us competitive because we're concerned about insurance costs, healthcare costs for staff, when we're also concerned about transportation costs. And we're trying to balance needs and, and various areas, and it could be addressed.
I will stop us there, because it looks like we're good to move to the next item. Approval of contact renewal with MTAC. Board Member Willie, you had pulled that up. Number twenty-eight, I'm sorry. Number twenty-eight, approval of contract renewal with MTAC.
And I think I said the wrong number. I was actually looking at twenty-seven. I'm sorry.
I will come back to twenty-seven then and knock twenty-eight off. Twenty-seven, Lightspeed Systems.
It's all COVID, so it's all good.
Board Member Willie.
Thank you. Through the chair, I was looking at, this seems to be a replacement for Gaggle. Am I looking at that right? And I know we just had a workshop around the online sort of piece. So I just wondered about the benefits of this one, as much as you can let us know, I know with some of the constraints.
Yes, through the chair, this does replace Gaggle. Gaggle has been with the district for a very long time. We have also enjoyed some very special pricing that Gaggle has decided that they no longer want to offer to the district. So it's made them less competitive with other, with other opportunities. We are currently paying two or three dollars less per student in other school districts. Gaggle would like to get us to their normal pricing structure over the next couple of years. I, I told them that that was just not something that I, that I could do. So Lightspeed came in, they actually offered a very similar product, but they also added an additional piece on there where it does actually report on the student's web history along with other indicators to give you a more fuller picture of a student's overall activity.
I like it. And did, we've seen Lightspeed or Gag, other, other school districts or whatnot are using Lightspeed already with success?
Yeah, through the chair, we have talked to many other school districts here in Florida who have successfully launched the product.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm gonna move now to forty-one, which is Amendment to the Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning HVAC Services Contract, RFP zero eight dash one nine T W. I have Board Member, Vice Chair Pearson on this one.
Thanks. Forty-one and forty-two for me are kind of similar conversations. Forty-two is actually, I think, the contract that we tabled.
Yeah, let me, you want me to go ahead and read that one for the public? Forty-two is Amendment Custodial Services Management Contract, RFP number thirteen dash twenty-one slash TS.
Okay. So on forty-one, could they both relate to outsourcing in my mind? For forty-one, which is the HVAC specialist, how many, my question is, how many HVAC specialists could we hire for two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars? Would that satisfy, if we could hire them, and I think that's a big if, if we could hire them, would that satisfy all of our need for HVAC projects that are outstanding?
Through the board, to Board Member Pearson. We, we would have to do a calculation on that question. The reason we take this approach is, the schools that get tended to be added to the contract are the larger campuses, the high schools, the middle schools, they're newer, more complex systems. And we just had greater success with them on the contract versus in-house. Our smaller elementary, simpler systems, our in-house folks handle those much better and effectively do a better job. We have a follow-on brief on both of these coming right after this, where I think a lot of questions are gonna be answered in that brief. And maybe we could revisit more questions then, as we're going through the material.
I'm happy to do that.
All right, I also had on forty-two, Board Member Carney.
I'm happy to wait until we do the.
Okay. All right, then I will move on. Are there any other items? That's everything I had. Any further questions on the agenda? We are now onto public comment. No public comments, so I'm gonna move to adjourn this part of our meeting. Now, the Duval County School Board moved to adjourn the meeting. I asked for a motion. I have a motion by Board Member Carney and a second by Board Member Hershey. All those in favor, signal by saying yay. Any opposed? By unanimous vote, the meeting is adjourned. We're gonna go ahead and take, let's go through, until quarter of eleven, take a quick fifteen-minute break to get everything switched over and let everyone go to the restroom. We'll come back at ten forty-five. Project your heat. So this is this. This is the next, yeah. Facility staffing, master facility, as many. Oh, you're good, you're right. And y'all have raised, first, the people have moved. I just wanna go, if we go down to the client, this whole town, whatever. I didn't feel like, they in church, and I was moving everyone around, like, you people are not door, we here, they door, they are. Yeah. No, 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 it's a different, it's a different item. We were trying not to push anybody else, require staff to go down. You missed, it was a whole church moment, like Easter Sunday, when everybody comes. And there weren't enough seats, I mean, there was a lot of staff, they were here, they didn't have seats, and they were limited.
Southern, summer.
Everybody went well.
Yes, the very Brooks Brothers.
Okay, but you know, Dr. Green and I would have a story. It's actually Talbot's, he's a back.